Good evening, welcome to Monday, August 19th, City Council meeting. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two is approval of the minutes from August 12th.
So moved.
I'll second.
Steve?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Hey, I do have one thing to add, apologize. I got a Scrivener's error in there. On page one of the minutes, in the title for that opioid piece of legislation, there was a line omitted in the minutes. I have a clean copy with the line, and it's just the title of the ordinance had a line missing. So I have a copy that's good. I don't think you need to amend it. It's the title of the ordinance, just Scrivener's error.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Item number three is area of public concerns. Please come up, state your name.
Steve Cox, Hummington Drive. A couple of months ago, I mentioned to this council of an area of shattered roadway. There has not been any repair work done to it in the last several months. And the roadway is actually getting worse. They were having vegetation growing through the road surface, and in some cases, right in the middle of the street. The road is collapsing. It needs to be fixed. And I would volunteer to give anybody on council who wants it, a guided tour at no charge, to take a look at actually what's going on with the road. I can give any interested party my contact information. So, again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Item number four, report, Department of Defense report?
Yes, the council, as they do every month, you've received the financial reports, the bank statements for the month ended July 31st. And I would entertain any questions you might have on those, or you can see me anytime.
I'm moved, except second.
John?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Item number five, Alicia Stroup?
Yes, Alicia, you can come up to the podium. I'm just gonna do a short, brief introduction. As some of you recall, a few years ago, for a long term, the city and the Williams County Humane Society had an agreement for spaying and neutering cats. And how it worked, just as a brief description, is a resident would call in and say, "I have this cat in my backyard, it looks like this, this is the description." We would then fax that information to the Humane Society. They would go trap the cat, get it spayed and neutered, evaluate its health, do whatever, and then send me a monthly bill that would be paid out of the mayor's budget, based off the revenue from the cat tags. So that agreement was no longer in place, and Alicia can get into some of the details, but some of it had to do with lack of vets in order to help with that spay-neuter. However, the city again is becoming overrun with cats, and so Alicia will have conversations that we can discuss as possible, helping our residents with that.
Hello.
Hello.
So, I've been at the shelter for 13 years now, and stray cats and the amount of cats has always been an overwhelming factor for all towns in the county. And I think collectively, we're getting to a point where we have multiple towns interested in working with us to curb this, but we're running into spay and neuter appointment availability. We get designated to us 50 female spots and about 55 male spots per month from our clinic. And this, we release them monthly to the public for sign-up, and this month, the spots were gone in a day and a half. I had people lined up out the door on the first of the month to get these spots. So, the main issue that we're getting is the availability of these surgery appointments. But also, people, as you know, want to complain about an issue, but not really be part of the solution. What we need to be able to do to work together is have some volunteers who are willing to trap these cats, bring them to us on these certain dates, and then they have to release them back where they were caught. And a lot of people also, you know, they just want the cats gone. They don't want them back. But there's a lot of research out there that says removing the cats just causes a vacuum effect. You're always gonna have the people feeding the outside cats, and in a perfect world, you spay and neuter your colonies, and then the unfixed cats, you know, don't come in. So, we do get some grant money every year from the Bryan Area Foundation, but that only goes so far, and we offer it to all residents who live in city limits, that they can actually do this service for free. So, there is something called the Rascal Unit, which is a mobile clinic that will come, and I don't know how many surgeries they can do in a day, in a day. Defiance County has done it once, and I think they are on board to do it again. However, I've been talking with them, and the cost is fairly astronomical. They say to plan about $100 per cat, which our normal clinic costs, when we use Humane Ohio out of Toledo, is $40 a cat. Yes. So, we also run into, I think Defiance is just about as far as they will go, because it is a drive from them. I'm gonna continue to harass them and see if they would consider coming here, but then we have to factor in this cost, and who it's open to, and how the cost would be divvied up between participants, Humane Society, towns, et cetera. So, I think if we cannot get the Rascal Unit here, a decent plan of attack would maybe be for me to reserve a certain number of spots per month, or every other month, just for Bryan. Again, if we have the volunteers who are willing to help and re-release them back where they were caught.
So with that, does that actually alleviate the issue that you have right now? Because I know we've had some residents that will call in and say, "Hey, I need this, cat is in the neighborhood, I'll trap it." But your spay and neuter list is full in a day and a half, so how does that?
That would be probably where it came to, I save a certain set amount of appointments. Community members are also able to utilize these spay and neuter clinics, but they actually send a transport van to us, and we load it up. Whereas, if a public member, it's gonna be the same pricing, but if a public member wants to utilize this, they can make appointments as well, but they have to get the cats to and from Toledo themselves. So, I don't know, moving forward in the spring, you know, I could potentially try to ask for an additional, smaller transport from the clinic, but we're, you know, up to their availability. Because they do let us, we at times will make a smaller transport, and we will take our van full of cats.
So presently, if I understood what you just said about if I, as a citizen, wanted to do it, I'd have to take the cat to Toledo and back. Are you folks right now transporting the cats to be spayed to Toledo and then bringing them back? Does this organization come out and pick them up and take them back? How is that process working for you?
For our monthly transports, we get two a month every other week from this specific clinic, and they send a van to us, and that's open to the public, but that's the spots that are gone within a day and a half. So, it'd be really nice if we could get a local vet to do some surgeries in-house, but we've also attempted that as well, without success.
They're not interested, or not able to?
Not interested, I don't think. So recently, like Edgerton put together a budget for this, and they've got a few volunteers who are trapping and releasing, and it seems to be going well.
Do we have any volunteers? Has anyone expressed interest?
I mean, social media says there's a lot, I mean, but I don't, I've got a couple people that have reached out to me that are interested in helping. I've got an employee who has a male cat right now terrorizing a neighborhood, and honestly, three of your neighbors have called with five cats and one in heat, which means that's gonna make the issue worse in a couple months. Yeah, I mean, that's the question, because I don't necessarily, I'm not gonna tell you we have a city employee that's ready to just go load up a bunch of cats, because the other thing is, cats could be diseased, they could have fleas, they could have things, you're probably not gonna wanna throw them in your personal vehicle that, you know, I don't know. That's a complication I'm gonna have to work through.
The Humane Society has traps available for the volunteers?
Yes.
So, the key is, we would need, sounds to me like, we would need volunteers-
Yeah.
-to be able, for Alicia to say, "I can start reserving Bryan some spots." But she can't reserve spots when they're being taken that quickly by others-
Right.
-if we don't have volunteers.
And I think I can get the volunteers. I think, though, it's just making a problem larger countywide, though, because if we say we want 10 spots a month, somebody's not getting those 10 spots if they're filling up in a day and a half. So it's kind of a short-term solution here, because I think that's just gonna, the more communities that involve yourself, you're not, that 50's not gonna be enough, right?
Yeah, yeah.
This is gonna sound really strange, but how can you tell if a cat is, belongs to a homeowner? And then how can you tell if a cat's already been spayed or neutered?
So, these clinics do something called an ear tip, which they trim the tip off of the left ear, and that's a visual indicator without even having to touch the cat.
Even if it's a stray cat as well?
Uh-huh.
Well, yeah, but like, my cats have been spayed and, or neutered, and they don't have tips. So, mine would get out of the house and trapped, then they'd what, just do the surgery and go, "Oh, never mind"?
Sometimes they can tell before opening them up, obviously, especially males. Sometimes females actually do get opened up. If they were fixed young enough, they don't have a prominent scar.
Yeah.
It's happened before, but then they will still get an ear tip. And a rabies vaccine.
And then if you run into anyone that's ever been really mad because a neighbor trapped their cat and fixed it, and then set it-
No one's ever been mad to get a free spay or neuter. But, of course, these clinics, if they are pregnant, they terminate it, no questions asked. They don't call and ask, it's just a termination. So you run into, obviously, some people don't like that.
So what would the cost be to the city if we reserved 10, 15 spots a month?
Forty a cat.
Forty a cat.
Have we given up on the cat license thing?
Yeah, we have.
Okay.
And people weren't, towards the end, and Andy can cut, we have it still, but people aren't buying them, and-
Yeah, I think Town and Country only sold like four tags this year.
Like, in a whole year.
Okay, okay.
So, I'm, can-
But if we start doing this, and we start telling the public, like, "Hey, if your cat's out, and it gets trapped, and it gets fixed, like, we have no way to call you."
Yeah.
And that was the other question. If they have a cat tag on them, would you call before sending them? Or, I guess we could have the volunteer call and say, "Hey, who's this cat owner"?
I would probably leave that up to the volunteer, because our spay, I mean, we've got 60 animals being dropped off in an hour's time.
We could communicate that to the volunteer of, "If you have a cat that has a tag on it, we need to check our database before you take it to the Humane Society and call that owner." Now, we may not have a good number anymore, and at that point, you just take the cat, but-
We run into the issue, too, where they allot us only a certain amount of female spots, and only a certain amount of male spots, and those feral cats that you can't touch, you're not gonna own.
You don't know what it is.
So we have to send it in a female spot. You can send males in a female spot, you can't do the opposite. So, that's what goes the quickest, is our female spots, because people are just bringing us what they're trying to catch, and they don't know, and we have to send it as a female. So that-
Yeah.
-is an issue as well.
So, we left only $1,000, I think, in that line item, because we had not, you know, having that option. So, it's something we can either address, if you guys wanna do it now, we could address it probably in a line item transfer with the, I mean, I don't think I've bought any major equipment, and if not, we can appropriate-
Is it 10, would it be like eight or 10 slots per month?
Or twice a month?
I'm at the disposal of the clinics, probably, maybe if we could do five to 10 a month, or maybe 10 to 15 every other month.
Okay.
And I always, I never get my exact schedule and numbers from the clinics till right before the new year starts. So, as long as they continue to give me the appointments that they normally have, but they have cut them before.
But if we had eight slots per month, at 40 bambinos per, that's 320.
Yeah.
You're talking 1,000, you're talking three months.
Yeah. How many do, does Edgerton have a month?
Um, they do about four or five a month.
Okay, well-
Maybe we oughta start off like five or something.
Well, I think we probably need to start off with at least 10, I mean-
Oh, okay.
Year round, or just in the summer, or?
They don't do outside cat surgeries the month of December, January and February, because they don't want them going, getting surgery and going back into the elements right away.
So it's nine months?
Yeah.
Not 12, so-
I can, I mean, at 40 bucks a cat, 10 a cat, that's obviously 400 dollars a month, times nine, year-
Thirty-six hundred.
Four thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
What, if I, if I, I can shed some light on what Defiance did, they set aside $5,000 to have this Rascal Unit come up, and it was just city, it wasn't countywide.
Yeah.
And I think they're getting $100 per cat, they're backing into it, because I think they had about 50 cats caught. But I'm pretty sure it was a flat $5,000 for the day, whether they got 10 cats or 80 cats.
Yeah.
I think.
Interesting.
And so, you had mentioned that they might not even be willing to come out this far, but they did go to Defiance County.
Yes, yeah, which is close.
And the other thing Defiance did was, I don't think the Humane Society, or Talbot County, or Defiance County Humane had the cages. So, the city of Defiance purchased $5,000 worth of cages-
Right.
-then committed the 5,000 to the, but the cages were one time.
We certainly don't have 50. We've got 15 to 20.
Yeah. So, whether you could even get this organization to come to Williams County, once a year versus the 10 every month, cost might be comparable, but-
Yeah. We just-
I think that's a fallback position, not an initial. And for full disclosure, I am the president of the Williams County Humane Society, so I will not be either submitting a recommendation, nor will I be voting, I'll be abstaining. But I do, in my, from what I'm hearing, how the issue would be, because you would, whoever in the city-
Well, I'm fairly certain I have to find volunteers.
-how much of a problem is this? Because we would need to know how much of, is it worth 3,600 bucks to help the problem go?
I think, I think yes, because I think right now, there are residents that call in and complain, there are residents who are getting their properties damaged, there are residents that are probably using their own inhumane ways to get rid of cats. So, yes.
Okay.
That's something, I didn't, I didn't wanna end the contract the city had to begin with, it was obviously the way that life happens a couple years ago. So, if we can do something that makes sure that these cats are humanely treated, and that we're not overpopulating our community, I think that that's a step in the right direction. Because right now, I think we are, I mean, it did not take long to overpopulate the community.
So, timing on this, and then I'm gonna back off. The timing on this would be, if we're gonna give 10 slots, when could that start, like?
I'm currently out till October.
October?
Which can, you know, you could have virtually two months.
But if we don't tell her by September 1st?
It could be November.
They're gonna be gone, they're gonna be gone in a day.
Yeah, I think we just need to be proactive for like March of next year.
Do you wanna start it in March?
You know, just to be ready to seriously have that conversation, I guess. Having you show up today has been a good thing. I think it's gonna bring awareness. I mean, you and I have been talking about it, you know, John, you and I have been talking about it for a long time, you know?
Yeah.
So I think getting it in the paper, and just having a conversation, I think, it's a good thing. And I know there is an issue-
Yeah.
-for sure, you know? And I would like to see people, you know, maybe even, you know, register their cats, get the cat license, help with this whole process, and microchip your cat, or, can you microchip cats?
You can.
Yeah, so, you know?
Sure can.
That way, if they do get out, it's not gonna be an issue, and so on and so forth, and-
I think part of the lack of licensing is, before, we were like, "Hey, you have to license your cat, because if they get trapped, we have no way to contact you, and they're gonna get fixed, and they're gonna be returned somewhere else." And so, if they know this is happening, and their cat could get trapped, they would be more, I think, responsible in tagging their cat.
Sure.
Now, I also know, there's not a lot of cats that love collars, but, you know.
Well, and I think, for public awareness, I'd be amiss not to point out, not only is this a difficulty for the residents of Williams County, and specifically for us, Bryan, but it's also the reason it's called the Williams County Humane Society, when in fact, what's happening, instead of people getting ticked off at seeing these stray cats shooting BBs at, yeah, shooting BBs at them, poisoning them, these are not made-up stories, these are facts.
Right.
So, there's a couple reasons to pursue something, if we're gonna start it in March, that would give whomever time to solicit and train the volunteers on TNR, if that be an accurate statement.
And I'm, I'm gonna hope that if I identify volunteers, I can send them your way, and your staff can train them and get them the cages they need.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and you'll let us know if we need more traps?
Oh, yeah. If we're gonna hit it hard in the spring, which is a good idea, because that's when kitty season starts, it gets crazy about March, April, I'll work hard to try to maybe get a transport, just maybe specifically, would you be against a whole transport of like 20, 30 cats at a time, just to hit it hard before kitty season starts? If I can get the appointments and dedicate them solely to you?
For a couple months? Like, not for a whole year?
No, no, just to like, maybe March, April.
Because, are you okay with that?
Because it comes in waves. Kitty season's crazy, once the spring starts, and then it dies off just a touch, and then it picks back up-
Coming back up, right now.
-because they just, they can have like three litters in a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we just have a conversation about it, and then hopefully by end of the year, we'll have an answer, and, yeah.
Alicia, I don't doubt that this is an issue, I'm not questioning that at least, but what are we talking about when it comes to numbers? I mean, is there any, do we have any idea as to-
I'd say-
...the scale of the problem?
We've offered this program for 10 years now, and probably have, on average, fixed, not counting the winter months, 75 to 100 outside cats a month, for 10 years.
Yeah, right.
In the county.
In the county.
With no visual results of those numbers declining.
Wow.
Yeah.
You go there on a certain, if you go there on a certain day, when this is occurring, what you will see are lots of people and lots of cages with cats in them stacked, ready to be transported.
Oh, yeah.
So, it, the scope of the problem is significant.
Andy, what happens, what?
You get a sick cat in a cage.
They have, I mean, it depends, they're gonna call whoever the volunteer is, and there is sometimes extra charges, but you can deny them. There's an antibiotic shot, mostly when you say sick, sick eyes, runny nose, very, very normal. They have a, they have a shot, a long-lasting shot, so you don't have to orally medicate the cat, and it's pretty good, and it's like 18 bucks a cat, so that would also be something to factor in. Do you spend any extra money if they need something like that, or do you not?
Right, and I'm not, not against that shot, but that's a problem, I think, for us on an issue where we have volunteers spending city dollars that's not authorized if you're calling the volunteer.
Right.
Right?
Yep.
So we gotta figure out how to handle that. I think you were talking more sick, right?
Yeah.
If they don't think they're healthy enough for surgery, they're gonna, they're gonna decline them. They might give them that shot, and say, "Bring them back for two weeks." But that, if they don't get declined for surgery that often, because of these outside cats, they just fix them and let them go. But, if that was the case, if a cat was that fixed, I would say the Humane Society would probably just take in the cat, and do our best to medicate it and get it healthy. And then maybe eventually, it could be released where it came from, if we were successful.
So you mean, come back, come back for the resolution? Okay.
Yeah, but I just, I wanted Alicia to have the opportunity to kind of explain some of the options.
Sure.
I'm still not opposed to a big spring TNR, even if we combine other communities, which I know that's something you were investigating.
I just thought if we spent the money for the Rascal Unit to come, to offer to the towns, other towns, "Hey, if you want to participate in this, you have to split the bill."
Sure.
But, like I said, I don't know max amount of numbers that they can do in one day, if they'll do a two-day thing. They don't even travel here, they lost two surgeons, because I've been harassing them multiple times a year, even though they tell me no for like two years now, trying to get that clinic to come.
But I think for now, in the interim, if we get something back to you guys before January, we'll be ready to go by your February 1 deadline to send the cats that way, but we'll have to obviously kind of know the volunteers, and then there may have to be something in there where you're calling someone else in the city for that extra charge, just so that it's all-
kosher.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All legitimate spending on our end. I can tell you, too, like, because I went over this with Alicia, there were some sick cats in the past, and, you know, that was a problem, but I never knew that, I just would get a monthly bill. I'd kind of verify, yeah, I called for six cats, and we'd send it off to the clerk's office to get paid. So those are decisions that I or anyone else in the city will make, because we're not medically diagnosing a cat. So I wanna make sure that's very clear, that we're not gonna decide whether they're healthy or not. That's not our call, that is, that's the vet that's doing that surgery.
Yep.
Okay?
Yep.
Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Alicia.
Thank you.
Item number six of the ordinance, John, will you please number a reading?
Ordinance number 29, 2024, an ordinance to amend Title 15 of the Bryan Codified Ordinances by enacting Chapter 1503 entitled Fireworks.
And I'm sorry, my laptop is dead, and it's never died before, so I'm not sure what to do with that.
Okay, this is our presentation of the fireworks ban that we've spoken about the last couple meetings, and I ask that you have a first reading of this. I think, in all fairness to the public, I think three readings, plenty of opportunity for them to speak up, but as of yet, no one has come to this body to oppose it. But I think getting fireworks legislation moving forward is just gonna make it easier for the police department to enforce the rules that are in place.
I do have a question on, on something in here. Under 1503.04, which, it just says, "No person shall use a theater or public, use in a theater or public hall what is technically known as fireworks showers or a mixture containing potassium chloride and sulfur." Does that include like pyrotechnics that a band would use, or something like that?
This is a little bit different, but yes, if you were gonna do an indoor show, it would still require a licensed exhibitor, and that is a different category than the outside exhibits. There are specific things that can be done. So if it was done with that permit, it changes from this, this is more broad, it's some things that were in the fire code, that it's just brought into local ordinance to make it easier for us to enforce. But again, it's not going to prohibit anything that is done with a permit through a licensed exhibitor. That's not the intent.
So when they, when they do those flash pots and things like that, that should be-
That's, yeah, those aren't, they're not using that material with those. Those are some different things, but yes, any pyrotechnics in a theatrical, there's, there is a process there that's supposed to happen.
Question for you, though. This is a hay of a reed. Question for you, though. This is a hay of a reed. Um, is all of this new? Is there specific language in here that we're adding back in? That was, that was my biggest piece to this.
This is all for the, um, for the ordinance piece of the fifteen oh-four, that is, new language is not in our current, um, ordinance. This is out of the Ohio Fire Code. There's some language that was brought in, just duplicating it specifically to this. Uh, the ORC change that allowed fireworks to be possessed and used by the public. What we're looking to do here is simply limit the ignition discharge and explosion of those fireworks. Uh, possession is not precluded by this because that's part of the ORC. You can actually own fireworks and have them within the limits of the ORC. We're just saying you can't discharge them within the city limits. That's the long, the short version of what all that verbiage says.
Okay, because there's a lot of verbiage.
There's a lot of verbiage.
The verbiage and the reason for it, again, is because of the, what the state legislature passed.
Right.
Allowing all of this language in.
Yes. Fountains are a different animal from the explode ignite, so those were, sparklers are still allowed. The novelties that were, were, uh, you were able to do prior to are not restricted by this anyway. So the snaps, the snakes, the pops, all of the novelty stuff is not included in this fireworks legislation. And that's part of the reason you get the long list, too.
I think it's somewhat important to point out that this was always a very skeptical piece of legislation a year, year and a half ago, because what we were asking the public to do was to understand the nuances that we put on, which was whatever, a hundred foot.
We put no nuances on it. It was all from the state, yes.
We explained that, that you, my point to this is the application of the number of people in the city of Brian that could shoot fireworks is in what range, five thousand, five hundred, or five?
We, we think it is five for aerial fireworks because of the distance. The ground fireworks was probably a little bit bigger because it's only a fifty-foot radius.
Right.
And there were probably a number of people that could do that, but that's not what our complaint's about. Our complaint's about the things flying through the air.
Sure.
So it, to make it simple, it's stop everything.
But I guess my point to council is the application is not overreaching. Thank you.
Perfect.
So if you guys are okay with just a first reading, you can move on.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, you don't have to. Huh? You want to be a guest?
No, next.
You're not next. You're, you're after John, um, does the tax levies.
Okay.
I know, I'm sorry.
Item number seven of the ordinance. Can I please number agree?
Ordinance number thirty, twenty-twenty-four, an ordinance providing for annual appropriations for the city of Brian for the fiscal year ending December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-four and declaring an emergency. Uh, there are three items we're asking for additional appropriations for. Uh, first one is about eighty-seven hundred dollars. Uh, that was for grant funding the police department received for body armor, bulletproof vests. Um, there's an item on here for two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars. That's related to the, uh, the quotes we received for the South Meyer sanitary sewer project, which is the subject of the next ordinance. Um, and then the third item, which is something we want to talk to you for a few minutes about, forty-five thousand dollars for additional appropriation for legal services in the, uh, as you're well aware, we have, uh, two significant legal cases that the city is engaged in and, um, we have, um, spent most of what was appropriated for twenty-twenty-four at this point. Um, city attorney official has been working on uh, both cases and, um, the hours have been adding up. So I don't think we didn't anticipate this possibility, but yeah, the, uh, kind of the rubber meets the road here, an additional forty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, and I want to make it very clear, the litigation regards to what the city and, and three of our employees are personally named in, including myself, um, is, as I had predicted, costing the taxpayers a lot of money. But the other option is to just close our eyes and not do our jobs and enforce the laws that we are required to enforce. So, um, it's, it's kind of a catch-22. Um, I think no matter who was the city attorney, we probably would have someone like Mark Fishel working on this case for us, so I think this cost was unavoidable either way. Um, but I do want to make sure the public understands that it is, the majority of it is, is this case that we're all entrenched in. So, um, it's unfortunate. I don't see that slowing down soon. Um, and at this point too, I think Mr. Fishel's going to add, need to add some co-counsel. He's largely been defending this, um, a lot of this stuff on his own and the common pleas. I mean, there's, there's five attorneys working for the other entity, so, uh, we're going to have to let him do that. So I just wanted to make sure you guys knew what that was for. Um, he, I, I don't know, I don't know any way to avoid it, so if you guys have any ideas, let me know, but I just, I think it's something that we're required to do and, um, he's been great at representing us and he definitely is not overcharging us. He is putting in so many hours to this case as well.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
John?
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
And I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Absolutely.
And Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number eight of the ordinance. John, will you please number agree?
Ordinance number thirty-one, twenty-twenty-four, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with SNS Directional Boring Limited for their project known as twenty-twenty-four South Meyer Street Sanitary Sewer Replacement.
We received bids last week for that project. Uh, this entails South Meyer Street. Uh, sewers are actually in the rear yards, so it'd be a pipe bursting project. Uh, we're encompassing both sides of the streets. Um, we applied for Ohio Public Works Funds three years ago, which is going to compensate us two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars in grant funds, which was the appropriation I asked for, was to advance me those funds that we're going to get back. Um, when we had originally estimated it, it was a five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar project. As you see now, it is eight oh-four. Uh, my estimate was seven ninety-four, so my current estimate, excuse me, was seven ninety-four. Um, we only had one bidder on it, which is typical in this project, but he was right in line with my estimate, so I have no issues with it. Uh, but I would request you suspend the rules and allow me to proceed with this project.
I'll move to a suspend.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Move to approve.
A second.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Mary?
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Item number nine is a resolution. John, please number agree?
Resolution number thirty-three, twenty-twenty-four, a resolution to set the employee annual premium rate for health insurance for the period September one, twenty-twenty-four through August thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five and declaring an emergency. Um, quickly before I explain this, uh, what's happening in this resolution, I, I unfortunately have to tell you another Scrivener's area, era, or error, I apologize. The title of this resolution is fine. It has the correct dates. It runs September twenty-four through August twenty-five. The body of the ordinance, of the resolution, um, had last year's dates. It's been corrected. I have a corrected version for tonight's signature, but I did not slip it into, into your pack. Sorry about that. Um, so, let's see, we received, um, renewal quote from Medical Mutual Ohio, um, maybe six, eight weeks ago. Uh, and the quote came in at a fourteen-point-nine percent increase over the current year. The city has some, uh, we've had some large claims, um, and numerous, numerous and large, and a couple of unusually really large claims, um, that are ongoing. And much of what that price increase, uh, is from is the stop-loss insurance, uh, which covers all the big claims. You know, we're, we're on the hook for the first fifty thousand dollars of claims and then, but beyond that. And, um, so that is driving a lot of the increase. We did ask, um, our representatives to shop the market, which they did. We checked with private insurers. We checked with other, uh, like municipal government pooled insurance plans. Um, we were either rejected or quoted even higher. Um, so we really didn't have much choice then to work with Medical Mutual. Um, we did throw some, uh, plan changes at them to see what the pricing would look like. Um, and so we've incorporated into this proposal a couple of changes that will impact the employees. Um, but we were able to, it's in pretty modest savings. We were able to get the fourteen-point-nine percent increase down to thirteen percent. Um, that equates to about a half million dollars over, uh, over the current year's plan. Um, and that's projected as the max based on the maximum amount of claims that we could, we could see. Um, the plan changes are basically two things. We increased the deductibles, which were currently three-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars for a single plan, seven-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars for a family plan to five-hundred and one thousand, single and family. We increased the out-of-pocket maximum from five-hundred-and-nineteen for a single and one-thousand-and-thirty-eight for a family to one-thousand and two-thousand, roughly double for the, uh, maximum out-of-pocket. Um, prescriptions, basically everything else in the plan remained as is. Um, the way the resolution reads, it identifies the employee cost on a per-month basis. Um, I also have those numbers on a per-pay basis, which is maybe a little more meaningful to folks. Um, the, uh, so what we pass on to the employees is the exact same rate increase the city sees. So it's thirteen percent to us, thirteen percent to them. And for a single plan, what that amounts to is, it goes from thirty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents per pay to forty-three dollars and seventy-eight cents, about a five-dollar increase per pay for single coverage. And for family, it's a hundred-and-five-ninety-nine currently to a hundred-and-nineteen-seventy-eight. So, uh, fourteen-dollar per pay increase for family coverage. Um, and those are the numbers, or that, that's the impact that this resolution addresses. And, um, I think we tried to do, uh, we tried to do what we could to, um, get a better rate for the city. Um, we made some sacrifices that will impact the employees, but we tried to make those, uh, as reasonably modest as we could.
I just want to say, first of all, that, uh, thank you very much for the legwork that was put in, whoever was involved with that, because it sounds like you really did your homework and, and worked hard to, uh, end up where we are. I realize it's a big increase, but, uh, um, you know, I appreciate putting the time in. And with that, I would move to suspend.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
And I move to approve.
Second.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number ten is a resolution. Can I please number agree?
Resolution number thirty-four, twenty-twenty-four, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Uh, this is a resolution the council approves, uh, every year. Um, like the title says, it relates to property taxes and the rates that the city of Brian, the share of the, uh, property tax that the city of Brian collects and receives. The estimated totals for twenty-twenty-five are four-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand dollars and change, slightly above what was in the current year as we would, would expect based on values of properties. Um, and that's all I have on that.
I'll move to suspend.
Second.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
And I'll move to approve.
Second.
I'm sorry, second. Thank you. Steve?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
And all of you will, they need to sign those, right, at the end? Oh, no, we just.
No, it's normal. Yeah, I'll take care of that.
Mine, just you and I, Mary.
Item number eleven is a resolution. John, please number agree?
Resolution number thirty-five, twenty-twenty-four, a resolution to accept a one-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-eight-dollar donation from Brian Fraternal Order of Eagles to the City of Brian Fire Department Fire Donations.
Uh, good evening again. This, uh, donation from the Eagles helps pay for two transponders. It's an annual subscription fee. Those transponders we use during emergencies, when lights go on, they send a signal out to, um, different devices like the Googles, Waze. Uh, some of the cars have built-in systems that are actually picking it up. Tells them an emergency vehicle's approaching or that once we stop that, uh, the scene is ahead. Make them aware. Try to change traffic patterns a little bit. We've seen this work. It's been effective. Uh, it's somewhere around a hundred-and-thirty-six vehicles or something like that is our average per month that we see out of about, uh, of the vehicles that are going out with us, somewhere around fifty-seven calls. So we, we see a little more than two vehicles per. It's been very effective and we really thank the Eagles for giving us this donation. It makes it a little bit safer out there playing in traffic.
I move to suspend.
I'll second.
Steve?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
And I move to approve.
Second.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Chief, I have a quick question for you. Are you seeing people pulling over like they have in the past? Or are you seeing things not as?
So actually with this, with this transponder, what we're seeing is people that normally would have driven away from us actually pulling over and stopping before they really get visual range to our lights as we're approaching them. And if one person sees somebody pulling over, for the most part, that line of traffic, they will all figure out what's going on, look in the rearview mirror, see the lights, and they tend to, uh, we get more people pulling over or stopping, coming towards us. Just kind of brings them out of their zone with the radio and, uh, gets them aware that something's there. With on-scene, we know that the, we don't hear as many screeching brakes when we're in an accident scene, so it's telling us it's got to be doing something. And then with the numbers that we're seeing, uh, part of the report we get back, every interaction, when a vehicle goes within the zone of notification, it actually uploads to the system that there was a vehicle there. It doesn't tell us what vehicle it was or, or how many, uh, times they came past the scene, but we know that we have interactions with those other vehicles. So we get those reports every month and, again, that's where that number that we were seeing, somewhere around a hundred-and-thirty, some longer scenes, we'll see much bigger numbers. We can actually go back and, and look at each incident and see how many people were impacted by that. And again, it depends on where you're at. If we're on six and fifteen at the intersection, we're going to see a lot more than if we're on, uh, some of the back, uh, county roads or somewhere in the city where there, we, we just don't have the traffic density. So yes, it has been a positive effect. Uh, there's still a lot of people out there that are paying attention to the cell phone and not paying attention to, uh, any emergency apparatus. So that continues to be a problem.
I, I asked that question because where I live, that corner of Center and Portland, um, I see people all the time. I hear the truck coming up Portland Street and people trying to beat the truck and, and all those things and I'm just like.
And some people will do that and, uh, yeah, we, we see that. Um, we anticipate that people are going to do what we don't want them to do when we drive. That's part of how we train our drivers to avoid accidents. Um, obviously, if the pub, public is cooperative, it makes it a whole lot easier for us to get where we need to be. And, and, you know, we always tell people, maybe we're going to your house, too, so you just don't know. Uh, we never know what the emergency is we're going to. If it's not an emergency, we're not going to turn the lights on. We're going to drive there and go check it out. But if the lights are on and somebody's. But if the lights are on and somebody's running in an emergency mode, we assume that somebody needs us quickly, and we're trying to get there to help, whether it's us, the ambulance, or the police department. Somebody needs help right away, and that's what we're going to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. John, number twelve in ordinance, or, excuse me, resolution, please number agree.
Yeah, I'm sorry. All the discussion came after the vote. I apologize. Resolution number thirty-six, twenty twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to advertise for bids for the project known as alteration to Bryan Fire Department.
This, that we're looking for right now is a modification of unused space that was in the building. We're looking to add six rooms for our bunk room that was designated space when they built the building. We're at the point where we need to get more than the spaces we're using right now, which were not originally allocated to be bunk rooms, and we're trying to get it into one nice conforming unit so that it, we can take those other spaces back for their intended purpose and use them appropriately. But this project, we're hoping to get done by the end of the year, but we're getting kind of late to get something to the scale finished. But it's, it's an ongoing need. We identified it when we built the building, and we've gotten to the point with twenty-four hour firefighters that we need to, we need to give them a good living space to be in.
Is there an estimated cost?
We're looking somewhere around the hundred thousand dollar range for this. It might go a little bit above that because we're doing all six rooms. We figured, we initially identified that we needed a minimum of four, but it was, it looks to be more efficient to complete the entire area in this one project rather than try to come back and finish it up later. So we might come up just a little bit above that, but we should not exceed ten percent more.
And what exactly is required to make this space that, for this purpose?
So a lot of things that have to be done. We already have sprinkler system in the area. They are going to have to redesign and drop heads into the area. We've got to do a drop ceiling in this area. They've got to do some modifications to the HVAC system. We have smoke detection in the building, but there's some additional that'll have to be done in the individual rooms, like we have one for the whole. Each room will have to have its individual smoke detection in it to be compliant. We've got to move one door because when we laid the original building out, it's right where we need to put one of the rooms, and to make it a better fit, they're going to do some minor modifications there. Structurally, it's interior walls and moving one door. The other, all the rest of it is flooring, ceilings, and the partition walls that need to go in.
This was in, this was within the budget, John?
This is included in the current year's budget.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to ask, thank you.
Yep.
If there's no further questions, I'll move to suspend.
And I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item number thirteen, the provision of test patrol officers?
Yes, Chief Fresky could not attend tonight, so he asked me to request the ability to, again, post the civil service tests through National Testing Network for position of police officers. We went ahead and did this and concluded on May seventeenth, and that list procured three officers that we have hired and are currently in FTO training, so we want to open that test back up for the two remaining open patrol units in the police department.
I'll move to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Item number fourteen, the building permit?
Good evening. Tonight I have the permit for Paul and Cheryl Combs. This will be the art studio at three seventeen West Butler Street. Rodney Miller will be doing the work. Zone is C three, construction type is five B, use group is M. Cost for the project is twenty thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars. Basically, this is us bringing the building into ADA compliance and some minor interior modifications.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number fifteen, the liquor permit?
Yes, council, liquor control actually came to visit my office about Lincoln Park's new existence. Just to explain this, this Lotto Masters LLC, they've previously had a liquor permit, and a couple months ago you were asked whether you wanted a hearing or not. All they were doing was adding another agent to their liquor permit, so basically a co-owner of that. But with that, because Lincoln Park is there, and it was a school, but it's within three hundred and fifty or three hundred and thirty feet distance, they are now requiring you to decide whether you object to the permit being basically renewed with an additional owner or if you want a hearing. My recommendation is because this was already existing, there are no issues when I checked with the police department regarding sales or anything else, that my recommendation would be that you not object to this permit as you had already passed it. Previously, we had a hearing just a few months ago, but again, they need this document because Lincoln Park is there. Obviously, your decision, you have four choices, so you can decide by motion how you want to go.
Yeah, I never know how to, I never know how.
So I think if you want to go, you can make a motion that you do not object this permit.
I do, I make a motion that I do not object to this permit.
I'll second it.
John?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And Mary?
Thank you.
Item number sixteen, approve of the dates for the community Halloween.
This is exciting stuff.
Hard to believe we're thinking about that already, but asking council to approve Saturday, October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, as our Halloween in the community. We'll do our community Halloween party at the ice rink from two to four, and then trick or treat would be from five to seven, as long as you guys are okay with that.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
And I know we threw a lot on you tonight, so I appreciate you reviewing it before you come here and asking the great questions and being present.
Do you have anything to add? John, do you have any department, do you have any PTA, do you have any newspapers? With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.